Hey Trent. Can you hear me? Trent, um, do I need to turn my mic on the teams? Or does that register?
Nope, you should be fine.
Okay, thank you.
We good to go Trent?
Are we, are we ready Trent?
Yep.
All right, I'll call this August 21st, 2025 Planning Commission meeting for the City of Watertown to order. Brandy, would you please do a roll call?
Yes, Alewski.
Present.
Kacachuk.
Present.
Spire.
Present.
Colhane.
Here.
Case.
Here.
Dolly.
Here.
Dargus Johnson.
Here.
And Tate is online, but we do have our full board present, so it, and with the actions today, it'll be majority in the affirmative. We'll pass.
Perfect, thank you. We have a quorum. Uh, this is the time that I invite anyone from the public that wants to speak about something that is not on the agenda. We have a period of time at the end of the agenda dedicated for that. If you fall into that category, please let Brandy know sometime in the next few minutes and we will get to it towards the end. All right, I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Make that motion.
We have a motion and a second further discussion, changes to the agenda. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, same sign, motion passes. I'd ask for a motion to approve the July 10th meeting minutes. We have a motion.
Second.
Second, uh, further discussion changes, corrections to the July 10th minutes. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, same sign, motion passes, minutes are approved, I guess. Regular agenda is 6A. This is the Kenneth and Arlene Lukinon addition annexation. Brandy, please take it away.
All right, thank you Liam. So this will be taking two separate actions with it being an annexation and zoning, but we will discuss it as one item because they do coincide together. So this property is approximately two acres being brought into the city. Um, it's an existing single-family dwelling. It would, will be brought in as R1 single-family, which are all of the adjacent property, the, the adjacent properties are also zoned R1. Um, the main purpose here, then they will connect to the city water and sewer services and there are associated assessments with the property that in, that are included in your background on the agenda, um, but that is for the trunk sewer assessment within Gulf Course Road, the park dedication that will be confirmed by, um, the park board on Tuesday's meeting, and then the Subaru Water Consent decree. So this, it's just the single property there. The rest of the remaining property will still be ag land in the county that's under the, the same ownership. Um, and then this will be platted separately and within city limits. And with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you Brandy. Does, uh, anyone from the commission have questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Brandy, um, being that this is a, an established house, an established, um, lot or what have you, um, that's why we would not be looking at doing a master plan, but if this was just a, I wanted to bring in two acres that is bare ground, we would require some sort of a concept plan for the remaining or that quarter. Is that our general practice?
Correct, yeah, but since they're not expanding the footprint of what is existing, then that is why there, you do not have to, it's subdivision exempt.
Thank you.
Brandy, there was a, and this is probably a better question for Bert, I don't see him in here, but, um, there was at one point a quick concern or questions about additional sewer capacity when we get kind of towards the western and southwestern part of the lake. Is that a concern? Obviously, this is sort of southeastern, but.
So, and actually it would be Robert Dari with the wastewater.
Robert Dari, yes.
But, um, sewer is not a concern.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff before I open the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. If the proponent is here and would like to introduce themselves and speak now would be a time. You don't have to.
You don't have to.
Okay, uh, is there any other proponents or opponents to the annexation? Anyone online that wishes to speak? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing and I'd ask, uh, for a motion on the annexation. 2523 is the resolution.
So making a motion, uh, to prove the request for annexation, are we also doing the zoning or is that separate, separate?
Two separate motions.
Okay, so just the annexation then?
Good question, thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner.
I'll second that.
Uh, second by Alewski. Further discussion regarding the annexation. Concerns, questions? Hearing none. I can do a voice vote on that one, right Todd? All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, same sign, motion passes. So the annexation resolution passes. I now ask for, uh, action on ordinance 25 dash nine, the zoning.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Case, second by Dolly. Any, uh, concerns, questions, discussion regarding zoning? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, same sign. That also passes and that brings us on to the concept plan for Dakota Commons. Brandy.
Okay, thank you Liam. So this is a concept plan update to the Dakota Commons subdivision. Uh, originally it was master planned in 2006 and when they came forward to do a subsequent phase in 2021, we had them do an update to their concept plan. So that is what this, um, action is also doing. Uh, because if you see up here on the screen, I have it pulled up where on the right-hand side, that is the currently approved concept plan for Dakota Commons and everything that is kind of in that lighter hatched, um, white area, that has, that was approved. Those were the only areas that were approved with the concept plan. Um, the reason why they did not proceed with the southern portions wi- within that approval was because it was the request of the city to change the cul-de-sac design back to more traditional design for, uh, obviously maintenance concerns and snow removal ease. So, um, the thing about the Dakota Commons subdivision obviously is the, um, the design of it and then the, the neighborhood component of the walking trails in the backyards, smaller street sizes that were all included within the PUD zoning that it was, um, that it is currently. So that's not going away. So then this, this left-hand side, that will, that you can see all of that green area that is the expansion of the walking trail and will also accommodate for the drainage, um, the drainage way that also happens within that open space. I know that there have been drainage concerns with this area and staff feels that through the continuation of this development further to the south, that those will be addressed and made better because right now it's, it's master planned so that it drains all the way down to the south into those ponds that the city owns along Willow Creek Drive. But it obviously has not been developed all the way down to the south yet. So any further development will be an improvement to the drainage and there are not concerns. Staff even had the developer submit a hydraulic analysis with this prog- project, um, which is usually not a requirement of the concept plan. However, we do know that there were drainage concerns. So engine, the engineering division has reviewed that and that all, um, met ordinance requirements and was, um, acceptable to our engineers. Um, other points to make as far as the differences, uh, they used different colors, um, but there's like on this north side along Third Avenue, that is still proposed to be R3, um, even though it's the different color than from what they used previously. And then along 19th, again, that is C2, low, um, local commercial. And if you saw actually a previous version that was posted on the agenda, they were showing it as C3, which, which was an oversight that it has always been proposed to be C2 ever since 2006. And then the other change is that pink area here that previously it was R2 development and here it is, um, proposed to be R3. It does, uh, transition well and then 19th is a major collector. So we go from commercial to multifamily into the single-family attached or duplex development. And then that is also what exists to the north. So there's, uh, for zoning wise, it does transition appropriately. Um, this subdivision, uh, the other concern that I heard, uh, I got quite a few calls from the neighborhood and looked into as far as the traffic capacity of 19th. And that segment between First and Arrow Avenue is actually the most, um, congested within the whole, with all of 19th Avenue, or 19th Street. So that is something that we will keep in mind as far as when further development happens. The threshold for requiring a traffic impact study is after 150 residences or actually dwelling units exist for a development and we are currently at 102. So that will take place, um, in the future and then that will be reviewed prior to any construction plans being approved. Um, the solutions that the master transportation plan points out are either adding right turn lanes to the intersection, um, and then also having collectors to the east to handle those developments. So it is definitely something that we have on our radar and will keep a close monitor on. Um, but still that street segment is only at 80% of capacity per volume. So that is good, at least that it is not over its capacity for the volume that it's seeing. But we'll definitely, um, have a traffic impact study done once we're at that 150 dwelling unit threshold for using that access because obviously then the secondary access to the north goes to Third Avenue, which is not improved and we want to avoid, uh, traffic being pushed to an unimproved street. So with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you Brandy. Does anyone from the commission have questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman. Okay, on the area between the walking trail and Third Avenue, that pink app that's going to be R3, someday are they going to access those from Third Avenue or is that going to be an interior private road to them apartments or whatever they decide to do?
Um, they could have access to Third Avenue because there's a lot of frontage there, but it all just depends on the layout at the time that it is developed.
But they wouldn't allow like individual driveways to different lots, would they?
Most likely no.
When do they think they're going to do that road from Third Avenue into this addition?
So that will be development driven at this time. Um, and I know that it's being discussed in the CIP when they're looking at capital improvement projects, knowing the, um, increase in traffic with the ice arena, um, being out in that area. Um, currently, you know, the ice arena does have paved access up 28th Street. And that is the, um, the route that we would prefer would be taken. Um, and that the township road would, you know, that's the secondary route.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Brandy?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, just looking at the difference where gotten rid of a lot of the cul-de-sacs and, and made it more traditional streets. I don't know if my, uh, if my eyes didn't catch it, but was there a, um, difference in the number of lots on the previous configuration versus this configuration?
So the, this new configuration allows for additional density because you are, um, so there are 120, 130 R1 lots being proposed, uh, 19 R2, one commercial and, um, three R3, or actually just the one R3 because the other one's already approved. But, um, yes, so you do get a higher density with the traditional layout.
It looked that way, but I just wanted to make sure my eyes were closed.
Yep.
Go ahead, Commissioner Case.
Uh, Brandy, what is the differential between the R1s proposed previous and now? He said 100, 130, what was the old one?
I didn't count it.
Okay.
I can.
I didn't, I didn't count it either, so it's, it's okay.
Uh, any other questions for staff before I open the public hearing? Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Dargus Johnson.
I'm just, um, for my own thinking here, the green ways with all the walking trails, is that city land then or is that taken care of?
So that's a great question. So the, hold on, I'm going to jot down my number where I left off here on my counting with my left hand, so I keep my finger on the lot. Um, so that was discussed with the park board. Uh, so what the park board ended up approving was that, that open space that they are dedicating will not be actual parkland dedicated to the city because they have a homeowners association that maintains it. And, which is ideal for the city because the open space is still acting as recreational space for the neighborhood or, you know, like a park, but the city doesn't have to maintain it and the city already has, uh, an excess of parkland to maintain per capita. So
that will be maintained by the homeowners association.
Go ahead, Mr. Case.
Uh, quick follow-up, um, as you're holding that, that lot. So is this green, any of this green area, is that going to be used for retention or detention?
Yep.
And that's, we don't look at that at the concept, but we look at that more at the preliminary plan?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and like I said, the, um, typically we don't ask for a hydraulic analysis with the concept plan. That usually comes with the preliminary plan and the construction plan, but knowing that drainage was, was a concern in this development, we did request it and review it at this time, but we will also get into the finer details when each phase comes in.
But the reduction of green space from the previous to this one shouldn't have a bearing on available space for detention or retention?
No.
Thank you.
Yep.
When, I don't want to get too far afield, but just when we annex this, I don't remember annexing this, this probably predated my time on the board. Wha- what was the story with the parkland dedication? I don't see, like where does that fit in on this one?
So, okay, the, um, we've always just accepted the open space because then they also install the sidewalks themselves.
Okay.
Um, or the, the trails per se.
Yeah, I understand that that's not within the purview of this particular discussion. I'm just looking at it, I was curious. Okay, thanks Brandy. Any other questions for staff? Uh, hearing none, I will open the public hearing. I'd ask the proponent, uh, whoever the applicant is or the, I guess proponent for this to come up and speak if they're with us or on the line. Is this the same fella from?
This is Mills.
Mills?
Yep, and then Colin DeYoung is their agent.
Is there anybody here, uh, from the project themselves that wants to get up and speak? Uh, hearing none, I will ask for, uh, additional proponents. Any proponents? Any opponents or neutral parties? Does anybody want to speak? Come on up, please identify yourself, sir, and then if you wouldn't mind, identify where it is that you live. It should be red. There'll be a little red ring around right below the, yep, now you're good.
Okay, my name is Russ Porthe, I live at 2401 Palisades Lane. Uh, my big concern is on this R3, what, zoned? First off, on this traffic count, uh, you mentioned that you'd done a study, it's only 80% full, but in certain times of the day, there's no way of coming out of that complex and doing a left-hand turn. You gotta turn right only. My next concern, uh, I'm against the R3, but you got R3 up there against Third Avenue. If that is turned into an R3, all of that water comes down right behind my house, comes down between my neighbor's house and down through all the rest of that green area. If you build an apartment in there, the flat space, the hard concrete, the roofs, we're going to have a water problem as you can't believe. So I guess that's my biggest concern is, I'm against R3 and I'm against unless they do something to get rid of that water on Long Third Avenue. It's now cornfields or bean fields. It's been that way for four or five years or ever since they developed it.
Thank you, Mr. Corthe, was it Corthe?
Porthe.
Porthe, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Uh, Brandy, just to confirm, that, that property along Third Avenue, that was already previously designated as R3 in the first time we approved this back in 21, right?
Yes, and in, and since 2006.
Oh, so all the way back to 2006. The only time I was on the, it came before when I was on here was 2001. The only R3 change is, is along nine, not quite along 19th, but it, but one off of 19th.
Yes.
Okay, thanks Brandy. Uh, additional opponents or neutral parties?
Red is good? Yeah, uh, my name is, hi, my name's Bert Fallic, uh, 2111 Parkview Trail, and so lived there for, for 14 years now in this complex. And, um, so, yeah, I don't have a, a huge, very specific thing to say other than the fact that, um, we bought into Dakota Commons for the Commons. And they're getting rid of the Commons. And so I realize they're having a hard time selling their lots and everything else, but I mean, that's not the spirit of which I moved. And I mean, you know, you're looking in the 2006 one, you know, all of those lean, you know, little green legs that stretched out there are the Commons area. And so that's what I want to see and, and that's why I bought there. And that's, that's pretty much. And then, um, I understand what you said about traffic, but I'm going to echo what he said about traffic and with three kids, you know, back and forth trying to get out of there. Um, if you're going to wait till 150 units or whatever, we've waited about three years too long because e- even right now, um, 7:30 to 8:30, um, 4:30 to 6 o'clock, yeah, good luck. You know, it's, it's just, is it as bad as a, the Twin Cities or Chicago? No, but for a Watertown, South Dakota, that is a busy, very busy stretch of road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fallic, Fallic. Uh, any additional neutral or opponents? Mr. Johnson, come on up or down?
And Liam, if I could just add to, um, or just reiterate, the city is the one that requested that they change to this traditional type of development instead of the cul-de-sacs because of the expense of snow removal. Um, so yes.
Okay, understood. Mr. Johnson, would you identify yourself and tell us where you live?
My name's Everett Johnson. I live at 2331 Palisades Lane. And, uh, I, I just have a, a couple of concerns, uh, similar to what Russ said, that area where they are proposing apartments up there and, you know, that, that water only has one way to run and that's towards us. And, uh, if we get like a three-inch rain now, we have water standing in our backyards for a little while. It's, you know, it's pretty good because they did put some drainage in there, so, uh, but, you know, I don't know if it can, you know, afford any more moisture than what, you know, from there than what we can handle. The only other thing I, I wonder is when they, when the city finally does do Third Avenue, are they still going to allow all the trucks and s- and semis to go down that road? Anyone?
Um, they actually are not allowed to, per their mining agreements and the. And that is on the township to enforce.
Well, that's pretty good, since the township doesn't have any police, so. Because, you know, if they, if they do allow trucks on there, which I'm sure that they'll probably still be going, they still do, they're gonna have to make that road a lot stronger than a regular four-inch layer of tower. Because if they don't, it'll be wrecked in two years. Because that's, man, there's traffic going down that road, semis and 60 miles an hour. And I think the speed limit's only like 35. So, I, that's another concern of mine, is that, you know, if, if they do it, do it right. And, and not skimp and, and having to fix it two years later, it doesn't make any sense. And one other question I got now, are they, are they proposing along Nineteenth, the hallway of Nineteenth there on, on to Dakota Commons for commercial entities?
Yes, they are. So, C2 local commercial, and that also has been master planned that way since 2006. And only, but you see that it is only this portion is the, is what Mills owns.
Yeah.
Brandy, would you explain what C2 is, or briefly?
Yeah, so C2 is local commercial, so it is like professional offices, you know, dentists, eye doctors that you see kind of further north on Nineteenth. That is the, the main purpose of the C2 district.
So, would they be routed off onto Nineteenth Street then from their businesses, or?
Potentially. And we would just have to look at that when a building permit came in and what they were proposing.
Like I said, you know, that gentleman before me said, you know, from 7:30 in the morning till quarter to nine, and from like 4 till 5:30, it's really a bad road to buy on. Because it really can raise your temperature sitting there. And finally, after five, 10 minutes, you just go right. So, I guess that's all I have, just, you know, if they do it, do it right, you know, so.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, thank you, I appreciate it, thank your comments. Next opponent or neutral party?
Guess what I have to say is just simple. I moved here from the country.
Would you please identify yourself?
Bridget Johnson, 2342 Palisades Lane.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I moved here from the country a year ago. And I know I'd driven through this area many times. As, when I would come to Watertown, I always thought, that is beautiful. It's like Brookings, they have a beautiful area like this with the walking trails and things in the backyard, the big green spaces. And I'm just saying, please don't cheapen it and put those houses one right after another when we have such a beautiful area in Watertown. When I looked all over town, my husband and I, and we kept coming back here. And we love it there, the neighbors, the neighborhood, the green spaces. There's supposed to be a playground there, they call it a park, but it's actually a slough. There's too much water, and the kids try to play out there, but it isn't working. So, anyway, that's just what I have to say. I said that just cheapens it. Have you ever been to Brookings, through those neighborhoods? They're beautiful. And I was hoping that for Watertown, too.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Additional opponents, neutral parties?
Doug Allen, 204 Lewis and Clark Trail, at the very end of Palisades there. I just want to clarify that the development along Third Avenue that is currently zoned C3.
R3, yep.
R3, sorry, I don't know the acronyms.
There's a lot of them.
The cost of the road of fix, you know, of building Third Avenue would fall to the developer, not to the city, right? I mean, that's why nothing is happening there right now, is that the developer's gonna have to say, well, okay, I'm gonna put apartments in there. And I'm gonna assume the responsibility for paying for Third Avenue. And that's why right now, it's kind of unlikely that somebody's going to do that, just because of the cost involved. I share the concerns of my neighbors with regard to that, realizing we don't have a design or a concept or anything else for that now. And I just think it's probably unlikely that someone's gonna come in and do that in the near future because of the cost of, they'll have to bear the full brunt of Third Avenue development. And that's gonna be expensive. And I don't know exactly how it works, this is a question maybe for Brandy. On the very corner there of Nineteenth, we have, that's county-owned, right? So, how does that work? Do we, at some point, do we annex that? Do we, you know, what are the options for the city with regard to that? Because I don't see the, the current owner having any interest right now in getting rid of it, except at an extremely high cost. Like, they want to make millions of dollars off of that piece of property. And I don't think anybody's gonna buy it at that price, but.
So, we would not, we don't, you can do forced annexations, but we, usually it's development-driven. So, the, that is problematic for that section of Third. Because that would mean that this, like, the city would have to pay for that portion of Third. And we could not assess it until it was annexed in. But, also, a paved road makes a property a lot more enticing and valuable. And, so then, if that, if that, if the owner who is not looking to develop and they want to sell, or they have a developer approach them, then at that time, when they would annex and zone it, then we would assess those costs back to the developer. And I want to just expand too, on like, the fact that Dakota Commons kind of hopscotched it, that property, and then developed further to the east. That would not happen in today's development standards. Because this, this area is what we informally call a spite strip. So, that you are avoiding having to pave the collector's street. So, that would not be allowed per our development standards today. And if you wanted to extend Lewis and Clark Trail over to this portion on Third, that would be the responsibility of the developer to improve that street so that it was all paved, paved and connected. Because Third, Third Avenue is the secondary access that is required for this development. So, today, that, this would not, we wouldn't be in this scenario.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any additional opponents, neutral parties, proponents? Anyone else? Anyone online that would like to speak regarding this concept plan? Going once, twice, three times, I will close the public hearing. And I will ask for a motion, and then we'll reserve discussion for the, once there's been a motion, in a second.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Case. Second by Spear, Fire, excuse me. Further discussion regarding the concept. I just avoided saying Michelle's. Further discussion regarding the concept plan.
So, Brandy.
Ms. Chair. Yes.
So, Brandy, you stated that the original cul-de-sac design, which was originally approved by the city, accepted by those individuals that have purchased property out there, thinking that that's what the long-range look was going to be. The city is the one that's directing or driving the idea to change the layout primarily for the economic reasons of cost to the city. And the developer is not objecting to that? Or had they said that they'd rather keep what they have? I mean, what's the backstory there?
And I don't want to speak for the developer, but I would say that they would prefer to keep on with the layout that they have. And I have a feeling that the referenced neighborhoods in Brookings may be done by the same developer. So, they definitely do, they, they like creating a space in a neighborhood. And Dakota Commons is great, and that neighborhood, I mean, that's not going away. But, it is very expensive for snow removal in cul-de-sacs. And even just, you know, garbage pickup, all, all of the city services where we, we appreciate the portions of Dakota Commons that exist. But, we did request that they go back to traditional development.
And, follow-up, Ms. Chair.
Go, go ahead, Mr. Case, and then we'll get to you, Ms. Alinsky.
But, and I'm, I'm not making a case one way or the other, I'm just trying to understand. Their reasoning again for the amendment to the concept plan is primarily to take on those R3 areas and that they wanted? Is that, again, again, why they were coming back is because of the expired, I couldn't remember, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, so they, they finally finalized the, the other portions to the south there. So, and then, then they're changing the, that R3 development as well, to the, like, to the west there.
So, if they went to change the R3 and kept their same design as what they had, would we be seeing them right now?
We would, because, well, so they have to, they have to have these phases of their concept plan approved before they can move forward with any development. And then, that was where, like, that's why we didn't approve those other portions of this 2021 concept plan. Because we did not, we weren't, the D.R., the design review team, which is comprised of staff members from all departments, we would not have approved it, or we did not approve it, that's why then, so that they were able to move forward with their next phase, is why we only approved phases one and two. Because we requested that.
Was there any, was there any information to the developer that the proposed Phase 3 would end up changing 10 to 15 years later from the time that was originally conceptually thought of? Was there sort of, had the city extended any idea that, well, the way you've got it laid out in 2006 is how we're probably gonna look at it. But, now we're 18 years later and it's something different. I'm just, I'm just trying to get the, understand how we got to this point.
Yeah, I mean, it really is just with the, the cost, and I know the street superintendent has the cost difference of what it takes to maintain a cul-de-sac versus a through-street. So, we, we, per our engineering design standards and ordinance, we actually, like, we are, we prefer to avoid cul-de-sacs.
One last question.
Go ahead.
Is it possible, in order to assuage the neighborhood's fears of, of change, to charge a service fee, being that this is a PUD-type development as part of the arrangement, to help absorb those costs by the neighborhood that's getting the benefit of the cul-de-sac?
You know, that will be up to the developer to.
From a homeowners association standpoint, that's, I wasn't saying that the city would dictate it, but if that was something that could be negotiated through a developer's agreement, that the homeowners association who want the openness of the area pay for that extra cost that's gonna be, and it wouldn't be an exaction exactly, but it would be, it would be just a cost that they would be putting upon themselves as a homeowners association to maintain those cul-de-sacs at the level of maintenance that, you know, you would expect the curvilinear streets to be done.
Right, and that could be something to consider, we just don't have anything like that in place. And, and there's only two more cul-de-sacs left that will be installed. The other ones are there, and, you know, they exist. So, then, but there still will be two more cul-de-sacs. And then, you know, with, with the southern portion, I mean, there was only, so there were four additional cul-de-sacs in those areas. But, and then as far as the walking trail, then you do lose some of those. But, I would imagine, I mean, and actually, I'm not gonna speculate, the homeowners association will work out their deals privately.
I'm sorry, I said one more, I will ask one more, I'm sorry, Ms. Chair.
All right, no more after this.
I'm presuming that sidewalks then would be placed on the roads, on the road network there for pedestrian purposes, the furthest east, north, south road, and there would be sidewalks as a requirement of this development?
Yep, yep. Because before, we didn't, they, because it was a PUD. So, there were just the, the sidewalk network in the rear yards. But, then, actually with that last phase that, that was done, they are, they do have sidewalk along the east side of Lewis and Clark Trail. And then, these next phases, though, will have sidewalk all the way.
Ms. Alinsky, sorry, it took so long.
No problem. Anyways, these here are all R1-zoned lots, and they require 75-feet lot. It's not like these little squishy lots. These are gonna be big lots and the big setback. So, it's not gonna be all congested like downtown, like some of these smaller lots. So, they're gonna be nice, big lots, they're gonna meet the setbacks. So, I just wanted to, hopefully that'll help you a little bit.
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Dargis Johnson.
Brandy, I have a question for you. I'm, I'm kind of leaning, kind of where Todd started out with, where these people bought with the idea that this was what their neighborhood was going to look like. And I'm kind of a stickler when it comes to that, we all know that on our last deals that we go through. So, if you would bring up that colored map again of the two comparables of what we had. We would only lose, if this street could join to this street, we would have one, we would have two cul-de-sacs left. If we were to redesign that a little bit, I don't like the fact that you have, you know, you got that, I miss readers here, what do we have? The, the hidden wood trail. You got 40 homes, well, 39, on either side of that as you crawl up that, that's a lot. And I don't know what we've got up in East Woods. I should've did my homework on that. You, you get up into some of those, and it's like, you keep winding and winding and winding, and you can't get out of there, you know? It's like you gotta go way back up to night teeth to get out of those, and it, those drives me crazy. Because I always get lost, and I gotta try and turn around. But, I'm just, if, if this were to fail, do you think that they would consider revamping and doing something similar to that, where we would keep some of the integrity? And I, I'm the first one to say I don't like cul-de-sacs, I, I think they're crazy. But, this neighborhood, when we did bring that in, I was on there, and I did approve it because of their concept, their whole plan was, like she said, the whole neighborhood development. You were paying for that. They pay HOA fees out there that are, you know, not necessarily cheap. So, they're paying for that already to be in the integrity of that neighborhood. We don't need this to look like East Woods.
My rec, yeah, my recollection, that, I mean, that's how it was sold to the city.
So, I'm, that's how I feel, I'm, I'm probably not going to approve this plan, just because I don't like the two, I mean, holy cattle. I mean, look at that, you go all the way on the bottom street, wrong glasses, what is that one called? Custer, holy tonal, you know, look at how far you go with no break in the action. You get on there, you're just, you're in for the long haul here. And I just, I don't know, I, that's just how I feel about it. I would love to see the two connected, and we, we lose two cul-de-sacs, but we keep two. And I think that might be a nice compromise if that were something they would consider replating. And I know that's not cheap, so, that's my two cents, thank you.
Further discussion, comments, concerns regarding the concept plan as proposed and moved?
Ms. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Case.
Brandy, in the event that this was to fail, what happens next?
Then we go back to the drawing board, we relay this to the developer. And then, the design review team discusses. Because staff told the developer one thing because of costs and maintenance. And then, if it would fail, I mean, yeah, they'd have to go back to the drawing board, which is unfortunate, because we, and per ordinance led them here. So.
I'm just gonna comment, I, 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 either design doesn't bother me one way or the other. I understand the functionality of, of what we're trying to do and with, with curvilinear streets. I understand the functionality of, of what we're trying to do and with, with curvilinear streets. What does bother me, though, is like, I'm still remembering back in the day when this came in, how it was sold to the community, why it was going to be an alternative housing selection for residents of the city of Watertown. I don't think it's developed as fast as the Mills would like to see it developed, but I think that's how it was sold. And anytime we change the game midstream, regardless of what type of development is, commercial, industrial, camps, construction, feeding operations, whatever, I always struggle with that, and that's where I'm struggling. While I think, yes, and the best, the best thing for the top, for the taxpayers of the city is to have cheaper services provided to everybody. I'm going to say, though, too, this part of the city as designed and as sold carries a premium as far as the, the value of those homes and the sales. And so I think that can be offset what you're gaining in taxes. I think they're probably more than paying their way than other parts of the town that don't have cul-de-sacs. So, I understand if you're just doing a simple algorithmic analysis of it, you could make it, you could say that, let's, this is going to cost the city more. But I'm going to say, did we take a look at what the potential tax implications are for the city as far as what we're going to be gaining based upon market share of what's happening? If we didn't do that, then you didn't have, it's not an apples-to-apples analysis. I can, I can give you the cost estimate, yeah, I know that cul-de-sac's going to cost me this versus this, but what are we getting in for inputs from a tax perspective? So, based on that, I'm, I'm going to be voting no on that because I think we've got more homework to do.
I generally don't particularly care for cul-de-sacs. And if this was a new concept plan, the problem is that, that I'm struggling with is that what had been kind of sold and discussed, it has apparently been five and a half years since this has been brought up, but I do remember the fellow sitting here, well, sitting over there, telling us about it. And I, I remember perhaps maybe some consternation at that time about sort of shifting sands and trying to develop on it. And maybe I'm misremembering, but I appreciate the city and what you guys are trying to do because I prefer straight streets. I understand for fire service, for snow service, for, for all infrastructure, it's cheaper, it's more effective, it's more cost-effective, but I'm struggling with that.
I just want to add, too, that, you know, that is the reason why things expire, is so you get another chance to review them, that it's not in perpetuity.
I understand that, I guess. And I'm a little bit concerned that the developer didn't show up or send somebody to even discuss it, too. So, I'm, I feel like we're, I, I don't, I feel like we're missing some information, but maybe not, but. Further discussion, questions, comments, concerns?
I do think, just kind of add, same line of thought there, but the purview of this board really is to look at things from a long-range perspective as well, right? So, when we've looked at the previous, the, the master plan, the previous concept plans, we're not looking at just the phase in front of us, but the, the master plan as a whole, so the end, end state, right? And so those previous approvals were, you know, contingent upon the overall idea. So, again, you know, everybody at the time had bought into the full development.
I would be in a different position if the developer was coming in here saying, I can't make this thing move as I thought it was going to be, it's eating me alive, taxes are, taxes and interests are killing me, I need a different solution to, to move the property. And I don't think that's what's happening here. And so, I would be, I would be a little bit more in the camp of the developer if he was asking for this change because he needed it. And then that becomes the stress point from the existing development. But that's not the case. And so I, I think there might be a, maybe it's not that design, and it's not the original design, but as, as my counselor down here said, we could maybe come up with a better design.
All right, good discussion, everyone, I appreciate it. If anyone has any final words, real quick, but otherwise, I think I'm going to ask for a roll call on this one.
Ms. Chair, I do have one more comment to make, just where Todd went.
Of course, of course.
Sorry, I know, no, no.
Ms. Dargis Johnson.
Thank you.
I wouldn't expect any less.
Getting back to, you know, like Todd touched on the taxes there. And in lieu of, and again, I, I appreciate what the city was doing because I think we all struggled with all the cul-de-sacs when it came in, remembering who was with me up here, but, because like you said, they're not, they're not efficient. But this development was set up this way, and we have to account that our tax dollar is not paying to mow any of that green space. So, if we want to put that in, in their column, saying that, you know, it's costing us more for garbage and snow, but it's also saving us on the mowing end of it. So, just throwing that out there as a thought, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dargis Johnson. Roll call.
Okay, Cole Hain.
Pass.
Like, you passed?
I'm passing.
Okay.
Which means you come back.
Yeah. Spire?
No.
Kaka check?
No.
Alinsky?
No.
Dargis Johnson?
No.
Dolly?
No.
Case?
No.
Cole Hain?
Doesn't really matter, I guess. No, well, no, to keep it. So unanimously, seven to zero, it, it, motion fails. That brings us to open public comment. Anything that anybody wants to discuss that was not otherwise on the agenda?
Nothing that anyone signed up.
Perfect, anybody online hearing none, new business?
Did I put this as new business? No, nothing. Other than, actually, I will introduce Alyssa Holling, she is our new permit technician. So, she was with us last meeting, and I forgot to introduce her, and so, perfect opportunity.
Welcome aboard.
She, she's been about, with us for about a month, so, great addition. Yeah.
Good.
She's doing a great job.
Latin for punishment.
Wonderful, old business?
Yeah, just wanted to give you an update on the bylaws that Bill and Liam have put together and draft, and sent the draft to staff. I have reviewed, and then we are waiting on, to get a group together so we can all discuss internally. Todd, I appreciate that you had sent me some comments. So, yeah, we're all just reviewing as time allows. And then we will be setting up a meeting with a core group to be able to discuss face-to-face and just get them knocked out, so.
Do you feel we're at a point, Brandy, and, and no is an acceptable answer, but do you feel if we're at a point now that we can set it for an agenda item, not per action, but for discussion in September, or?
Yeah, yeah, I would say, things get, yeah, yeah, because to coordinate the meeting, Carla's going to work on that, for us to discuss before bringing it. I would say the second meeting in September.
Cool.
To keep, to keep our goals in line.
Wonderful, any need for executive session?
No.
Perfect, then we're adjourned.
All right, thanks, guys.